Good evening, everyone. The clock on the wall says it's 6:00. So time for the November City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission meeting, and I will officially call it to order. With a roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Francis?
Here.
Mr. Ayers is absent. Mr. Jones is absent. Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. And I'll entertain a motion to approve our absentees.
I move to approve our absentees.
Mr. Chad, second.
And we'll do that by general consensus. Just so everyone will know, according to our rules, anything that passes or fails must do so with a majority of the planning commission, not a majority of who happens to be here. So that means anything we consider tonight has to pass or fail 3-0, or it comes back next month. So with that out of the way, the agenda, gentlemen. Any changes to the agenda? We're good for that?
Mr. Chad, move to approve the agenda.
I second the motion.
And we'll do that by general consensus. Okay, minutes from last month. Any additions, corrections, changes, problems?
All abstained since I was not here.
All right. You're going to make it tough, aren't you?
No changes.
I still need a motion.
Motion to accept the minutes as presented.
And I guess I have to second it, and we'll do that by general consensus. And we'll just kind of grease that one on by.[101.02][101.02](Laughter). Right. Thank you. But we'll kind of grease that by.[105.02][105.02](Laughter). Okay, this evening, we have three public hearings and a subdivision. So without any further ado, let's go for our first public hearing, PUD 06-1, SSP number two.
This is case number PUD 06-1, SSP number two, on an application filed by Yolo Development One LLC, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio 45431. The applicant requests a specific site plan to allow for the construction of a 44,000-square-foot office building on 4.82 acres. The property is located at the southwest corner of Colonel Glenn Highway and East Side Drive, further described in Book One, Page Two, Parcel 25, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. And just for our audience and for those who are watching from home, the way we run our public hearings is we have a presentation from the applicant, then we have a report from staff. If there are folks here who wish to speak in favor, against, or ask questions, we open the floor to them. Then we get any written input, emails or letters that we've received on the case. Once that's all been read in, we'll close the public hearing. We'll discuss and hopefully come to a decision. So I'm sure there's someone here who is going to speak to us.
Good evening, everybody. John Koppelcheck, 3500 Pentagon Boulevard. Not much to add to what Melissa said, and obviously I'm here to answer any questions once Colin presents. It is a straightforward 44,000-square-foot office building, very similar to what we've been doing kind of up and down Pentagon Boulevard, Colonel Glenn, and again can answer any specific questions that you all might have after Colin's presentation. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. So we are here this evening for PUD 06-1, Project Kona. It's very reminiscent to Project Rainier that we approved maybe five or so months ago. So once again, like John mentioned, it's a two-story office building of 44,000 square feet total. It's built on a 4.82-acre lot. Ingress egress will be via right in, right out from the Colonel Glenn Highway to the north, and a full access drive through East Side Drive to the east. Just to get our bearings here, we are the lower red star on the map. This project is kind of in northwest section of our city. As far as zoning and surroundings, it is zoned PUD 06-1. It was rezoned in 2006. The surrounding uses, PUD 002 is a professional office building. To the south is vacant land owned by the same developer. West is vacant and a B2 single-family home. And to the north, there is a salon and spa and vacant building and land, which is PUD 034, and the salon is zone B2. And here's just to zoom in on the zoning map of where we are, where the site is going in is indicated by that gold star there. As far as the building setbacks and buffers, to the east is 85.43 feet. To the west is 75.72 feet. To the north is 84.28 feet, which is 135 feet from the center of Colonel Glenn Highway. And to the south, far exceeds whatever requirement we have. It's over 100 feet. Staff has no concerns with the building placement. And here's just an overview of the site plan, of how that fits on the parcel, just for your eyes. That gray, kind of dark green rectangle there, that's kind of the retention pond, the wet retention pond, that will be used for stormwater purposes. And once again, you can see the ingress egress to the north there and kind of the northwestern corner of that parcel. And once again, that's a right in, right out. And then East Side Drive to the east there has the full access. Parking, they are providing 161 parking spaces, six ADA spaces. Just a brief calculation, 44,000 square feet divided by 300 is 146.6, which we rounded up to 147, so they exceed that parking requirement. Building length, it's approximately 137.5 feet by 160 feet. It stands 32.8 feet tall. The materials used are Monarch Brick with Ephes accents. Lower facade has dark brown and red bricks, and the upper facade has a cream Ephes siding. And as you can see, there's numerous windows here to give it a nice look to the building. And here's just a blown-up version. I believe that is from the eastern elevation. Landscaping provided, they are providing roughly 69 trees as well as a diverse selection of shrubs and perennials. They always exceed our standard landscaping expectations, so we're pleased with what they provided here. And here's just a look at that landscape plan. Signage, we are permitting up to 200 square feet of wall signage across all elevations. Once again, that will be approved by the planning department upon submission. We haven't received anything at this time regarding signage. Stormwater management, they are proposing a wet pond to the south of the building, which will include a fountain for algae reduction. That's an included condition. And before zoning approval, they'll just have to meet city engineering development standards. Lighting, no glare affecting adjacent properties, which we're always pleased with. Standards for exterior lighting in 158, 136 of our code are met, and it's visually harmonious with surrounding developments in the area. We are recommending approval of the submission subject to the 17 conditions in the proposed resolution. Happy to answer any questions as they come up.
Thank you. Our usual very comprehensive report makes it easier for us. Since this is a public hearing, I will ask if there's anyone here who wishes to speak in favor, against, or simply ask questions. I'm not seeing a lot of action here. Did we get any written input or emails?
No.
Okay. Last chance to speak. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I will start on my left. That's you.
Oh. Back and forth here. Still trying to get up to speed, but this is a research park district, right?
It's O1.
Okay.
It's office, is it not?
Yeah.
OPUD?
What is it? It's an RP1 or an OP1? I'm trying to understand.
It's a CPUD. So commercial PUD.
Oh, I'm in the wrong rig. Okay. Don't be me.
No problem.
Still learning. Okay. Everyone have any questions?
Okay, well, you got a second helping.
No questions.
Okay. Just a couple of very quick things. Granted that the property to the west, Colin, you probably want to answer this. Granted that the property to the west is B2. It still has a single-family residence on it. Is it being used as a single-family? I guess my question goes to the fact that there's a parking lot, paved parking lot within 10 feet of the lot line, at least the way I look at it. And it doesn't appear that there's any buffering along that edge. And granted, I don't think whoever is living there will probably live there that much longer because they're surrounded, but still, it's still a residence, so.
Yeah, so happy to answer. There is a resident currently living in it. Actually is not the owner of the home, which I've been in contact with pretty regularly, and they have voiced their, that they are okay with our project and happy it's going forward, and we've been working with them as it relates to clearing and where the property line is going to be. So everything has been discussed with them, and they're well aware of our intentions.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. The 200 square feet of signage that we're permitting, does that include some sort of a monument sign out at the street, since there's a fair amount of setback on the building?
Sure. So the applicant wasn't seeking out a monument sign at this time. We didn't want to impose any restrictions on them in case they were to pursue that in the future.
So the 200 square feet could include that if they so desire?
So the 200 square feet is specifically for the wall signage.
For the building, but they would have to come back and ask us for a monument sign, essentially?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay. And while you're up there, would this, the additional traffic flow, would this tip the balance for a traffic light on East Side? Oh, is there one there already? Okay. I can't keep those street names straight. Good. Well, that takes care of that. Thank you very much. Okay, gentlemen, second helpings.
Just a technical question. Colin, sorry. I'm trying to understand, under the CPUD, maximum coverage by all buildings and impervious services, 75%?
Right.
And so that's that 44,000 square feet over 4.5 acres?
So we look at the whole PUD for that, so there's still kind of vacant land available, so we'll calculate that into the whole PUD.
All right. That was my only question, so I could understand it.
All right, gentlemen. If there are no more questions, I guess I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case PUD 06-1, SSP number two, with the attached 17 conditions.
I second that motion.
A motion in the second. Yeah. Ms. Melissa, if you would be so good as to read the roll.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries 3-0. And we'll be... Sorry, we'll be looking forward to another really nice development along Colonel Glenn. Okay, second one is Mission Point, PUD 06-6, SSP number five.
This is case number PUD 06-6, SSP number five, on an application filed by Woodard Development, 601 East Third Street, Suite 200, Dayton, Ohio 45402. The applicant requests specific site plan approval to allow for the construction of a three-story, 82,500-square-foot office and research facility, and a two-story, 55,000-square-foot office and research facility on 10.99 acres. The property is located on the east side of Mission Point Boulevard, approximately 200 feet south of Colonel Glenn Highway, further described in Book One, Page Three, Part of Parcel Two, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. And since we have only one person in the audience, I'm sure you are going to make our presentation tonight.
Good evening. Jason Woodard, 601 East Third Street, Dayton, Ohio. I'm going to follow suit and not duplicate presentation. I will just say this is a resubmital of an application that had been approved previously. And I believe one additional condition was added related to access in working with the fire department. But we will not duplicate the staff presentation, and we have no objections to the conditions that have been proposed.
I thought this sounded familiar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and I'm from the Planning Commission. The case you have before you is PUD 06-6. This is the fifth specific site plan for the PUD. The fourth specific site plan was actually very, very similar to this. Same site, same building. It just was in 2021 with a three-year expiration date, and it's since expired. So in order for them to pursue the two buildings, they need to come through and get this reapproved. So what they're looking for this evening is approval of two buildings, one being 82,500 square feet and one being 55,000 square feet, for a combined 137,500 square feet. The project's located in Mission Point, which is actually on the west side of 675, about 500 feet south of where Colonel Glenn kind of crosses 675. Just to the north of it is actually outside of the city, so the connection at Colonel Glenn is in the township. But then when you come south a couple hundred feet, you're actually into the city limits. The 11 acres that we're discussing this evening, I've highlighted in blue here. Again, it's on the east side of Mission Point Boulevard, south of Colonel Glenn Highway. The project in total is, the project in general is zoned MXPUD 06-6, which was rezoned back in 2006, 2007. The PUD regulations, which are included in your packet, include a multitude of uses. It was worded in such a way where it says a minimum of 70 acres be dedicated for office, up to a million square feet of office. And then it had limitations for retail and hospitality and even some potential for residential within the PUD, which is how we get to the MX mixed-use PUD. Right now, the PUD in general has 94,000 square feet of office, so there is ample room for growth for office space within the PUD. Excuse me. To the south is vacant area of this PUD. To the north is Wright Patterson Air Force Base land, or US Air Force land in the township. And then you've got 675, and then ultimately Wright Patterson Air Force Base as well. To the west is outside of the city. It's City of Riverside, and it's low-density, single-family residential, and some multifamily residential. And then to the east, this property about on 675 frontage. Seen here is the site plan, and this kind of gives you an easier view of it, where I've got the two buildings. The building A is to the north, and that is the three-story, 87,500-square-foot building. And then to the south of the future access drive is building B, which is the 55,000-square-foot building. There's parking fields on three of the four sides of each of the buildings. Combined, it totals 387 parking spaces. And if you do a calculation backwards from what office requirements and combine the total, they need 390 square feet, so they're three short. However, you can see on the site plan down along the southern end, they've got future parking. And the reason they're not building it at this time is there's potential for these buildings to have lab space and not traditional office space, which requires less parking. And so this gives them the flexibility. If they do with a full office space, then they'll need to build these extra parking spaces to meet that minimum counts. But as the applicant stated, there's also, the fire department has requested a secondary access point where this future parking is. So a few of those will need to be eliminated in order to create that access point. And that's to give a secondary access point should there be some sort of car wreck in the, or some blockage of that singular access point. And the fire department still needs to get on site. It needs to be that access to either of the two buildings. They do show a private access drive that will be shared to the north with building A and to the south with building B. There is a requirement that access easements be dedicated along that entire drive, so that should, when the property to the east develops, then they do have access through that proposed access point. Out front of the, along Mission Point Boulevard, they show two ponds, both retention ponds, so they'll stay wet, you know, throughout the year. And they'll be required to have fountain and aeration devices as we require with all retention ponds as of the last 10, 12, 15 years. The buildings, they'll be very similar. They're using the same architecture to each of the buildings. One will be two-story, one will be three-story. They show the gray and red brick on the first floor, and then gray, darker gray Ephes at the entry point, and then lighter Ephes on the top stories of both the first, the two-story and the three-story building. As I mentioned before, there's potential for lab space. So you can see there's an option on each of the elevations to have overhead doors. The one on the northern building will be on the west elevation. So, and my laser pointer doesn't work on this screen, but it'll be the west end of that northern building, and then on the south end of that southern building. So they won't face the main roads. The one on the northern building won't face Colonel Glenn, and the one on the southern building won't face Mission Point Boulevard. Should the lab space not come to fruition, then there is the option for the traditional window elevation for those locations. They do, this is the landscape plan that was included back in 2021. And you can see that there's ample trees throughout the site and perennials and shrubs and bushes throughout the site to add to the overall attractiveness. Staff has a condition, or proposed a condition in the resolution, that the final landscape plan be approved prior to the release of a zoning permit. And of course, we will establish, should this move forward, we'll establish a PUD agreement with a bond amount so that before we even issue a permit, they'll post a bond for whatever the cost of landscaping is, just to ensure that, and we do that with everyone that they require, because we don't want them not planning landscaping and not anything in their history would suggest otherwise. But there's a landscape bond to ensure that that landscaping is installed. There are a few other conditions within the proposed resolution. One, that no temporary signage be permitted within the PUD, that they do record that future access, or that access easement for the future development to the east. And there's that trigger point where if they do go with full office rather than some lab space, staff has the ability to require them just to go ahead and build that future parking area whenever it's deemed necessary. In terms of signage, they didn't, they're not showing any groundage signage with their application, but there's some generic signage on the building because they don't have a named tenant for either of the buildings. So just the condition that they're limited to 300 square feet of signage on the longer elevation and 150 square feet on the shorter elevations total. So there's two longer elevations and two shorter elevations on each building, so 150. And not any of the four elevations can have one that's more than 75 square feet. So it kind of breaks that up and makes sure that there's no huge amount of signage on any of the elevations, but they do have the opportunity to put signage on any of the four elevations. There are actually 19 conditions. I believe I took one out or combined one. In the staff report, it mentions the 20th condition for the access point, but I combined one, but then updated the staff report. So where I say, where I referenced condition number 20 in the staff report is actually condition 19, and that's the future access point that's going to be required. But staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request subject to the 19 conditions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. It is a public hearing, so I will ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak. I see a very large number of vacant chairs here, so I kind of doubt that. Did we have any written input? No written input. Last chance to speak. So I'll close the public hearing, and this time I'll start on my right.
Just one question, Randy. Condition 18, you have, one bike rack is required? I'm just curious where that comes from, because normally we don't do that, right?
No. Back in 2021, when this went through, the Bike Way Committee, the Bike and Non-Transportation Advisory Committee requested a bike rack. And so we just added that in in '21 and just carried it through to this. Yeah, I mean, it could be, we don't want to get into how they design it or, you know, where the appropriate location. I mean, they'll figure that out when they're going through, but we just don't require one for each building.
Okay, no, that was just my curiosity, because like I said, we don't normally see that.
That's one of those ones that the Bike Way, the Bantac, you know, took a direct look at it and asked for that kind of condition, so we added it on there.
Just one question. Mixed PUD, right?
Correct.
As such, there's a section on the building that's 59 feet. These are restricted to 50 feet, are they not?
That, in the residential, any residential building would be required.
Okay, it just says maximum shall be 50 feet, but we have discretion, so.
That's typically more for the, so that the apartments or any multifamily wouldn't get over 50 feet. But office buildings, the existing office building out there is four stories, four and a half, I think it's 65 feet.
Oh, okay.
So they have precedence.
That's the only question I have.
One quick question, and I'm not sure this would be for the applicant or for staff. Are you all planning a Mission Point sign out at the entrance to the Boulevard?
There's already a pretty significant sign.
Oh, okay.
It's hard to, I don't have it on.
I don't get that way very often, so I don't remember.
I want to say it's like 25 feet tall.
Oh, okay.
And they've got really nice landscaping out there that kind of almost hugs the sign as you're coming in. It's hard to explain it.
Okay. And the landscaping at the entrance is not going to cause a line-of-sight problem?
No. And that'll be, we'll review that and make sure.
And I know we already have the left-turn lanes and the right-turn lanes already in place on Colonel Glenn, so.
On Colonel Glenn and on Mission Point Boulevard.
So we're good. Okay. That's all I've got. Second helpings, gentlemen? Okay, I need a motion. Don't fight over it.
I make a motion to accept PUD 06-6, SSP number five, with its 19 separate conditions.
Mr. Chair, a second.
And I have a second. Thank you. And I need a roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries 3-0, and we'll be looking forward to, hopefully it gets built this time, so you won't come back again in three years. Okay, we have one more public hearing tonight, and that's PC 24-7. It's conditional use, Seventh-day Adventist Church.
This is case number PC 24-7, conditional use, on an application filed by Zach Sherman, 3050 Tipp, Cowesville Road, Tipp City, Ohio 45371. The applicant requests conditional use approval to allow for an expansion of the Beaver Creek Seventh-day Adventist Church located at 670 Grange Hall Road. The property is further described as Book Three, Page 15, Parcel Seven on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, it doesn't seem the applicant could be here this evening, so I will just handle the presentation duties.
Sounds good.
All right. So we have PC 24-7, which is a conditional use for this church. The request overview, they are hoping to add an addition for a fellowship hall. A fellowship hall, just so we're all on the same page, is a place for people to gather, socialize, and take part. It's supplementary to the overall use of the church, so it's not where service is held, per se. Exactly. There is, the addition itself is 5,482 square feet total. The entire lot is 4.42 acres. Ingress/egress is kind of unique on this lot, so there's two entrances. There's an in-only drive from Grange Hall Road to the north, and an out-only exit on Grange Hall from the south. The southern exit will be widened slightly to allow for a drive aisle to have direct access to the southern side of the addition. And once again, just to get our bearings here, this church is southwest of here, of here in the government center, southwestern part of our city, once again, at 670 Grange Hall Road. Surrounding zoning is pretty much entirely A1 agriculture, besides to the north, which is R1AA, which is a single-family home. To the east is also a single-family home. South is Dominic Laffino Park, and west is vacant land. And here's just a look at our zoning map here to verify that, as indicated by the yellow star, that is where the, this property is. This is an existing look at the church. As you can see, that in and out drive aisle is kind of how they operate currently, but you can see it's a relatively smaller church. Here's a look at the proposed addition, so that addition will be coming out from the western side, and it will be 43, roughly 43 feet from the right-of-way on Grange Hall Road. Building design itself is 77 feet wide by 66 feet lawn, and there is a small connector building, which is 41 feet wide by 10 feet lawn, that will connect the addition to the From the peak of the roof is 29 feet and 3 inches. That does not account for the clear story. They haven't decided if they were going to proceed with that, but it doesn't seem like they were, even though they show it in the elevations, it doesn't seem like they're going to proceed with that at this time. They're using the sagebrush tan metal siding with charcoal brick waistcoat around the base of the addition. And here's just showing some zoomed-in elevations of the addition. As you can see, there's that drive aisle there on the southern part that is included in the widening. And here's from the northern side. Regarding parking for this lot, so the, for all churches, the principal assembly area requires one parking space per three seats, and in addition to one parking space per vehicle owned. It's a relatively smaller congregation. They have approximately 75 spaces currently on the site, which adequately accommodates the main sanctuary area. Because of this, since this fellowship hall addition is supplementary in nature to the overall use, we're not going to be requiring any additional parking spaces for this time. So, that's kind of how we're planning on proceeding with that. Landscaping, there is a landscape strip on the western, the front facade of the building, which has various shrubs, ornamental grasses, and perennials. We have no concerns with that proposed landscaping. And here's just a zoom-in version of that, so you can see it's along the western side there, and then wraps the building. We are going to recommend approval for this conditional use, subject to the seven conditions that I outlined in the resolution. Happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you. Once again, it's a public hearing, and now we have nobody in the audience, so I can be reasonably assured that no one wishes to speak. Did we get any written input?
No.
Okay. Makes it easy. I will close the public hearing, and I'll go back to my left side this time.
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
No questions.
Just one quick one, and that's that, you were referring to the clear-story windows. Could you put one of the elevations up again?
Yeah, absolutely. And I might be mistaken. I was referencing that in the center of that building, the tall...
Oh, the spire?
Yeah, the spire, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. I apologize.
The clear-story windows, to me, are the little, the little windows on the wall break.
Okay, understood. That must be, yeah.
Okay, but...
An understanding, misunderstanding on my part.
The spire is not part of the building.
Correct, yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's all I needed. Second helpings, gentlemen? Okay, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PC 24-7, conditional use with the attached seven conditions.
I second that motion.
And we'll go for a roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries three zero, and we'll be looking forward to seeing that addition. Now, we have one more item, and that is a subdivision that is longcoming in its final section. I think this was originally approved, what, 19 years ago? And this is the last part of it. Bent Creek Woods, Section 2.
Great. So, this is case number 24-9, Bent Creek Woods, Section 2, final subdivision. The areas itself is 11.906 acres. They are requesting final subdivision approval. It is composed of 19 single-family lots, and 1.899 of those 11.906 acres will be dedicated as that Bent Grass Drive extension is elongated, I guess. As previously discussed, the site plan was approved previously in April of 2005. The second phase represents 48.7% of the site plan, and will close out the Bent Creek Woods subdivision. Here's a look of that subdivision here blown up. As far as the lot details, they're, once again, they're all single-family residential lots. They range from .446 acres to .898 acres as our largest lot, and once again, that right-of-way is being dedicated, 1.899 acres along Bent Grass Drive. The conditions for approval are relatively boilerplate, as outlined here and in your resolution. Happy to answer any questions. We're recommending approval with the listed conditions attached to the staff report.
Thank you. I'm just going to throw this one open, gentlemen.
I don't have any.
Okay, I do have one. I'd be remiss if I didn't. Is Bent Grass Drive cut through now, or is it stubbed out at both ends, and this will complete it?
It cuts through. It's, this will complete it.
Okay. No, I mean, is it drivable now, and they're simply putting, they're simply plating the lots out, or is it stubbed off at both ends?
It's there.
It's there, okay, that's what I thought. My only question is lot number two, is, does it have enough, it's that long skinny one?
Yeah.
Does that have buildable space on it?
Yeah, it should.
I'm looking at the setback lines, and somebody's going to have to build a long skinny house.
Right, we certainly might have to, might have to be creative with that as far as the approval's concerned, but we'll make sure that the setback requirements will be met there.
Okay, all right. Not exactly. I'm sure there's a, there's a requirement, a minimum square footage requirement in the plat, is there not?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Probably 1,600, would be my guess. Gentlemen, anything else? Okay, I need a motion, please.
A motion to accept S24-9 with its three boilerplate conditions.
You want to approve it?
Oh, I motioned to approve it, yes.
That's why we have a lawyer here.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
To keep us out of trouble. Okay, read the, read the roll, please, ma'am.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. And that carries three zero, and we are fresh out of agenda items, so I will ask, unless staff has anything else to add, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
I second that motion.
And I have a second, and we are at 6:33. Thank you very much, gentlemen.